The meeting of the Aurora City Council for September 9th, 2025 is hereby called to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Barrero?
Present.
Alderwoman Garza?
Present.
Alderman Masiacos?
Present.
Alderman Nunez?
Here.
Alderman Franco?
Here.
Alderman Seville?
Here.
Alderman Benuelos?
Here.
Alderwoman Smith?
Here.
Alderman Bug?
Here.
Alderwoman Bade?
Here.
Alderman Larson?
Here.
Alderman White?
Here.
Mayor Lash is present.
Is there a motion to approve the appointment of a sergeant-at-arms for this meeting? Motion was made by Alderwoman Smith, seconded by Alderman Franco. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries by voice vote. Before the pledge, we're going to take, if the council remains standing, a brief moment, for a moment of silence after the pledge. If there's anybody like to lead us in the pledge? Alderman Franco, thank you.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If the audience and the council please join us in a moment of silence. A city employee passed away yesterday morning. Some of you may know Jason Ryer. I know there's a number of employees throughout the city that got to work with him. He spent 12 years and seven months in our Parks Department. I spoke with his father this morning, and he thoroughly enjoyed his job and the people that he worked with in serving our city. So please join me for a moment. Thank you. Next on the agenda, mayoral appointments. If the clerk will please read the next agenda item. Oh, sorry. We can go with the mayor's report briefly. There's not too much excitement, but go ahead.
All right, no problem. Good evening. Tony Martinez, Chief Communication Marketing Officer. At an action-packed weekend, we had our Fiesta de Patrías Fest and Parade this weekend. Play a little clip of the highlights of this weekend. Maybe. Hold on one second.
While we wait for that, John Zee got married this past week, so he's no longer here. He's on his honeymoon. Says he'll be back next Monday.
Jeremy says he likes the lowriders. He's out here with his mother, Valeria. Valeria told me with how the situation is now with concerns of an immigration enforcement crackdown in Chicagoland weighing on the community, it's more important that events like this are held. The city of Aurora released a statement days before Fiesta de Patrías, saying it reaffirmed its commitment to its immigrant community with a priority of providing a safe celebration for all.
It does feel a little sad. I wish there was more people out here, but I understand the fear.
Margarita Flores and Nancy Martinez echo that sentiment as they notice what they say is a drop in attendance for the parade.
Does it mean just have more meaning for you this year?
Absolutely. Wanting, you know, making sure that we're out here representing for those that maybe are scared or don't, you know, have the ability to do so. Very excited, very happy.
Dana Solano and her father Javier say they hope the city coming together to celebrate Hispanic heritage and culture sends a message.
It says diversity is what makes us strong.
So the whole community can thrive.
We're happy. And we're just, we've just got to come out and not be scared.
In Aurora. Victor Hacobo, CBS News, Chicago.
So that was a great weekend, right? We, there was a smaller turnout than we expected, but I think that the statement of, you know, the more diversity, the stronger we are, right? And that's who we are as a city. So it was great to see everyone come together. We had thousands at the festival. We had thousands at the parade. And even though there is a scare in the community, you know, on social media, you know, it was great to see people come out, celebrate the culture, and in the joyous and really safe environment this past weekend. At this moment, I'd like to thank some of our partners and employees that did really make this possible. Our Aurora Hispanic Heritage Advisory Board helped coordinate the event. Our Special Events Department, several departments throughout the city, including Public Works, Public Facilities, Emergency Management. We had many volunteers, many organizations help out through the execution of this parade. And last but not least, our Aurora Police Department, which made sure, you know, scouring, you know, social media and kept on monitoring the situation on social media to make sure that we had a safe, safe and fun environment for everyone to have fun and celebrate the culture. So we can't wait for next year, hopefully a bigger and better fest and parade, but, you know, really looking forward, we're looking forward to it. So as we look forward into the future, some events happening in the next week and in two weeks, here this Friday, Alderwoman Juanne Garza is having her 20th Annual Pioneer Breakfast. That's right. So 20 years is a long time, and it's always a great breakfast, jam-packed with people celebrating, you know, mariachi's playing, and this year's keynote speaker is Honorable Renee Cruz. So we know it's going to be a great event and something that really kicks off, you know, Hispanic Heritage Month, which starts on September 15th through October 15th. Also this weekend, we have a Friday, the G A R Museum has their booze and berets. So basically, it's a 21-and-over evening event where the public can come and just enjoy the rich and often untold stories of Aurora and their connection to, you know, defining conflicts in America, like the Civil War, Spanish-American War, World War I, World War II. I think all the tickets have been sold, but if any of the council members still want to attend, make sure to reach out. We'll make sure to give Eric a heads up so you guys can attend this weekend. And coming up in the 18th, 19th, and 20th, we have our Third Annual Film Fest. So it'll be kicking off on Thursday, September 18th. I do have the opening night flyer in front of you. So we're going to kick off with opening night at the venue. Doors will open at 6:00 PM. The screening will happen at 7:00 PM. The screening of Move Your Body: The Birth of House. It's really a film dedicated to the founding of house music, right, in the city of Chicago. Following, yeah, it's supposed to be fun. Following the screening, the movie star and music producer and film producer will also have a Q and A after the screening. Then after that, we support local business. We're going to go to McCarty Mills right on River Street, where we'll have the after-party. DJ Tito Latino will have a pop-up kitchen, really listen to some house music, dance, have a good time for the opening night of Film Fest. Friday, we have two films at 3:00 PM and 6:00 PM. And then Saturday, we have a day full of films at 11:00 AM, 2:00 PM, and 6:00 PM, and having a closing night mixer at Society 57. So, you know, really, you know, the following weekend is going to be, it's going to be great from the 18th to the 20th for a Third Annual Film Fest. Also on the 20th, I don't want to say too much about this, but the Aurora Land German Heritage Society is having their first, hopefully annual, Aurora Land Oktoberfest at Phillips Park. I know they're very excited about it, really to just really enjoy the, you know, traditional German cuisine, dance to live music, and of course, drinking a little beer. So, you know, I know they're going to encourage you here in a little bit, put through in public comment to kind of bring your lederhosen's, you know, and your, you know, and your drindles to have a good time and drink a little bit, you know? It's good to relax and blow off some steam. So that is all I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Next, we'll move to the mayoral appointments. The clerk will please read the next agenda item.
250610, a resolution authorizing the appointments of Ricardo Herrera, Amy Flores, Asvi Chashki, Alex Feinberg, Ava DeWig, and Alex Tello to the Aurora Youth Council. So moved.
Second.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution? Motion was made by Alderwoman Smith, seconded by Alderwoman Garza. Are there any questions or discussions regarding this resolution? There being no further questions, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Barrero?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Nunez?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Benuelos?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Larson?
Yes.
Alderman White?
Yes.
12 yes, zero no.
Not saying, motion carries. This resolution is approved. Are Ricardo, Amy, Asvi, Alex, Ava, or Alex here tonight? Please stand. Congratulations, and thank you for stepping up to serve. We're going to do one more appointment, and then we'll meet down in the pit and take a group photo. Will the clerk please read the next agenda item?
250645, a resolution authorizing the appointments of Latanya Rem and Mary Faltz to the African-American Heritage Advisory Board.
Is there a motion? A motion was made by Alderwoman Smith, seconded by Alderman. Seconded by Alderman Masiacos. Are there any questions on this agenda item? No further questions. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Barrero?
Yes.
All right. Alderman Barrero?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Nunez?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Benuelos?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Larson?
Yes.
Alderman White?
Yes.
12 yes, zero no.
Motion carries. This resolution is approved. Congratulations, Mary and Latanya. Please stand. Next agenda item?
250654, a resolution appointing Alderman Ted Masiacos, Alderman Carl Franco, and Alderman at Large Will White to the Aquatics Advisory Council.
Second.
Is there a motion to approve this resolution? Motion made by Alderwoman Smith, seconded by Alderwoman Garza. Are there any questions or discussions regarding this resolution? There being no further questions, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Barrero?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Abstain.
Alderman Nunez?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Abstain.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Benuelos?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Larson?
Yes.
Alderman White?
Abstain.
Nine yes, three abstain.
Motion carries. This resolution is approved. Congratulations, and thank you all for stepping up to serve on the Aquatics Board. If we want to just meet down in the pit, we'll take a quick photograph and move on with the rest of the city council agenda. Okay, the next section on the agenda is public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to offer public comment?
We do, Mr. Mayor.
And would you please read the rules of public comment?
Pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, all persons shall be permitted an opportunity to address public officials under the rules established and recorded by the council. Under our rules, any person may address the city council for up to three minutes, with a maximum of 30 minutes allotted for all public comment. No person other than the timekeeper or the chair for the purpose of maintaining order may interrupt a person recognized for public comment during his or her comments. Members of the city council shall not engage with nor respond to a speaker during the time set aside for public comment. Staff is directed to follow up with members of the public with respect to any concerns raised during public comment within the scope of the city's authority following the adjournment of this meeting.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please read the name of the first person wishing to offer public comment?
Thew Elliott.
Welcome, Mr. Elliott. You have three minutes beginning now.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Thew Elliott, resident of Ward Four. Winter's coming, and I know you've begun a process for creating emergency warming spaces for unhoused and stranded neighbors. I've been a worker in these spaces for the past two years and have been grateful for the opportunity to be in functional community with folks who are often relegated so far to the margins that I may not have any Congress with them otherwise. Deeper bonds and stronger community have been a goal for those of us who have participated in this work. I think it's important for all of you to hear me say that running a proposal process through the procurement portal and subjecting it to opaque competitive protocols is the opposite of building community, and the timelines are not conducive to delivering on any of our goals. I encourage you to reconsider how you go about this work and build in transparency, collaboration, and community education and cooperation at every level. This is something we need to be building together, not something to be handed to the highest bidder, who may or may not have any true and informed commitment to our community. I do request follow-up on this comment, as I have more encouragement and information to share with you. As you're already aware, we have a host of skilled and committed volunteers committed to this work, but we need a more immediate and vital partnership with the administration to designate, perhaps even commandeer, appropriate physical spaces where care can be delivered. We want to help the city live up to its commitment to care for and protect the safety of everyone. Thanks.
Thank you. I'll ask Chief of Staff to please reach out to Mr. Elliott and bring him up to speed as far as things that are happening internally. And I'll ask the clerk to please read the name of the next person wishing to offer public comment.
Todd Van Olend, Mike Baum, and Mark Strausberger.
I'm not sure who's first, or if you have a performance lined up. I see a small ukulele. You have three minutes beginning now.
Todd, 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 what are you doing, man? Will you stop?
In a garden.
This isn't.
What a melody!
This isn't springtime, when it's time for tulips and ukulele fest. This is fall. It's time for mums and Oktoberfest.
Well, I guess I didn't dress appropriately. Will there be beer?
Well, of course there's going to be beer, Todd. It's time for the annual Aurora, Aurora Land Oktoberfest presented by the Aurora Land German Heritage Festival, September 20th at Phillips Park Pavilion.
Oh, you mean the First Annual Aurora Land Oktoberfest, September 20th, from 3:00 until 10:00, when Aurora celebrates its long history with German immigrants. Many settled here when the German territories consolidated into a single country. At one time, there were four or more churches in Aurora with services in German. The Van Olends came here to this area about 150 years ago. When did the Strausburgers move here?
About the same. How about you, Mike?
Long time ago.
Long time ago. You can tell.
Since then, Aurora has attracted fine people from countries around the world. But just as everyone is Irish on St. Patrick's Day, everyone is German during Oktoberfest. I'm sure Ted Masiacos has lederhosen in his closet.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Juanne Garza will look great in a gingham dress with her hair parted in the middle and braids falling to either side of her face. And I bet Alderman Bug dances a mean polka. So all of Aurora should accompany us at Aurora Land Oktoberfest in 2025 with beer, brats, dogs, pulled pork, Oompa bands, sauerkraut, September 20th at Phillips Park.
Pavilion, yeah.
Pavilion, there you go.
Yep, so we're going to have two bands, Fritz and the Pretzel Twists, and the worst-case scenarios, spelled W-U-R-S-T. There'll be contests, prizes, raffles, and fun for the whole family.
We would like the mayor and other aldermen for supporting our festivals, and especially Alderman Masiacos for his vision in bringing back the longstanding German heritage to the east side of Aurora.
Now, a percentage of the proceeds are going to go to benefit Phillips Park. We want to thank our awesome committee for putting this together in a short period of time, four months. So visit Aurora Land Oktoberfest on Facebook for more info. Tickets are available on Eventbrite and at the door for a $5 entry fee. Wish to see you guys. I can't take this guy anywhere. Get out of here. Go, move!
Thank you. Will the clerk please read the next, name of the next person wishing to offer public comment?
Mary Faltz.
You can go to either side.
So, good evening, good evening, good evening. So, some of you know me, some of you don't know me, but I tell you what, I am so grateful and honored to be able to be appointed to the African-American Heritage Board. I've been in the city of Aurora for over 30 years doing events here. Many of you know me, many of you have helped support different events. I want to say to each and every one of you, to Latanya, to the whole African-American Advisory Board that's here, the ones that are not here, that I hope and pray that we can do some great things together. The city of Aurora is here, is diverse. Anyone knows me, I'm diverse. Together, we are going to do some great things. So to each and every one of you, I just want to say thank you. Mike, you know I love you a buncha, but God bless you all, and together, we're ready. God bless.
Thank you, Ms. Faltz. Are there any other members of the public wishing to offer public comment?
There are not, Mr. Mayor.
This concludes the portion of public comment speakers. Madam Clerk, will you please read next both the consent agenda and the direct-to-council consent agenda in full?
241008, a resolution authorizing the director of purchasing to accept per-ton dump fees for Michelle Waste disposal for the disposal of non-special and special excavated soil. 250227, a resolution authorizing the sale of obsolete and surplus property using J.J. Kane Auctioneers and Purple Wave Incorporated. 250539, a resolution authorizing the approval of substantial amendment 2025 number two to reallocate prior year's Community Development Law Grant Home Investment Partnerships and Home Investment Partnerships American Rescue Plan funding. 250540, a resolution approving project recommendations funded from year one of the Aurora Affordable Housing Fund in the amount of $400,000. 250541, a resolution approving the 2025 opioid use disorder grants in the amount of $344,000. 250612, a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract with SiteMed for providing onsite firefighter medical examinations and other services. 250644, an ordinance authorizing an agreement with the Aurora Regional Economic Alliance for the provision of special services within the area constituting Special Service Area One through December 31st, 2025. 250647, an ordinance establishing a conditional use plan development and approving the 411 East Galena Plan description for the property located at 411 East Galena Boulevard. 250648, a resolution approving a final plan for the property located at 411 East Galena Boulevard for a parking facility's residential use. 250655, a resolution to authorize the mayor or his designee to execute the contracts for Julie Smith and Gina Manetti as certified fingerprint analysts for the Aurora Police Department. 250662, a resolution to award the contract for the South Stulp Avenue streetscaping improvements to landmark contractors from Huntley, Illinois, in the amount of $302,940.75. 250664, a resolution authorizing the director of purchasing to enter into an agreement with Geneva Construction Company from Aurora in the amount of $276,725.20 for the resurfacing of three parking lots. 250667, a resolution requesting the approval of a one-year support contract for city network firewalls in the amount of $65,426.3. 250671, a resolution authorizing the director of purchasing to execute a contract for the access improvements at 1110 Aurora Avenue with Martin Construction in the amount of 250672, a resolution authorizing the city to accept a grant award of $34,420 from the fiscal year '26 Violent Crime Intelligence Task Force FOID Grant. 250680, an ordinance vacating a water line easement and a stormwater control easement on the property located at 1444 North Orchard Road in Kane County. 250687, a resolution approving the revised rules for the administration of the city's deferred compensation plans. 250698, a resolution approving the appointment of Michelle Neirman as Assistant Corporation Council III. 250694, approval of the minutes of the Tuesday, August 26th, 2025 city council meeting.
Okay. This concludes reading both agendas in full. Are there any questions, motions to remove any items from either the direct-to-council consent agenda or the consent agenda? Alderwoman Smith?
Yes. As much as I hate to do this, I feel that I need to follow my gut instinct here. I'd like to remove 250698 from the consent agenda, please.
We'll move agenda item 250698 to unfinished business. Any other aldermen or alderwomen that wish to remove or have any questions on any agenda items? Okay. There being no further questions, will the clerk please call the roll on both consent agendas? Oh, was there a motion? Yeah, was there a motion made? Motion made by Alderman Franco, seconded by Alderman Nunez. No further questions. I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Alderman Barrero?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Nunez?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Benuelos?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Larson?
Yes.
Alderman White?
Yes.
12 yes, zero no.
Motion carries. The consent agenda and direct to council consent agenda are both approved. Next, we'll move to unfinished business, and we will start with agenda item 250698.
250698, a resolution approving the appointment of Michelle Neirman as Assistant Corporation Council III.
Are there any questions? Is there a motion, motion and a second on this agenda item?
Comments, how you wanna go first? So-
First, I guess, let's see if there's a motion and a second.
Second?
I'm second.
Motion was made by who?
Nobody motioned.
Motion made by Alderwoman Babe, seconded by Alderwoman Garza.
I'm sorry, what is the motion called?
Just to approve, approve the agenda item. Yep. Just to bring it to the table, and then there'll be a discussion. You can vote however you wanna vote. Yep.
Just for discussion?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. Motion. I'll make the motion.
Okay, motion made by Alderwoman Babe, seconded by Alderwoman Garza. Okay, now Alderwoman Smith has a question.
So, I wanna start out by saying this has nothing to do with the qualifications of the candidate. I feel this particular person is very qualified for this job. This has everything to do with the position that our budget is in right now. We can't sit here and, and be told we're in Armageddon and then continue to hire people. And I do realize that the, the offset that will be given yet again today will be the estimated savings that will occur by hiring this person. And I understand that, and I appreciate that, and I respect that, but it's still an, an estimated savings. I don't think, in my seven years as alderman, I've ever had so many of my constituents, plus other Aurora people, come up to me and comment on this particular item. Again, it's not the person, it's where we are in the budget process. We are being told that we don't have enough money to cover the bills that we're going to have, and I, I personally do not spend money that I don't have in my own banking account, so I'm not gonna do it for the city. So, I would prefer to hold this until we get our financial, our finances, our budget in, in order, rather than to vote on it and, and lose the opportunity of having this person. So that's what I'd like to open it up to, because I do feel that, you know, other aldermen may have the same feeling. And I, we've had some time to think about this, and, and I feel very strongly that we shouldn't be hiring until we get our budget process in order. Doesn't mean we don't need the person. Again, the savings that have been explained to me, they are estimated savings, but they are estimated savings, so I can't really rely on an estimate right now when I don't know where our budget's gonna land. So, if I am to, I'm forced to vote on this today, I will be voting against it, and I'd like to hear what my fellow aldermen have to say.
I'm gonna allow corporate counsel to articulate her views on it, as this is being hired in the Law Department.
Yeah. I, I appreciate the, the comments about Ms. Neerman's qualifications. She is very qualified. So, so a couple of things. First of all, the whole, the whole reason I, I investigated this was an attempt to curb some of the outside legal costs. There are significant legal costs. Today, I received a bill from the Employment and Labor Law litigation firm for August for $33,000. This is, that's not, it, it, it's not typical, frankly. It's, that's a little higher than we, we usually pay them, but it's also not completely atypical. When I pulled all the, you know, all the bills for outside labor council, which, you know, it's fairly easy to do, it's, it was just a handful of firms doing it, you're looking at over $300,000 a year. So I looked at what we could do to curb those costs, and we still have the work. The work doesn't go away. It's not, it's not like we don't need someone to negotiate labor contracts. It's not like we don't have, you know, IDHR claims. It's not like we don't have an HR department that needs some legal assistance. And we just, our office doesn't have the bandwidth, or frankly, the years of experience that Michelle brings to the table. So, in my judgment, I think bringing someone in-house, that there's enough work there that we can, you know, fill the position. She's agreed to come on, you know, four days a week, so that we're not, it's not a full-time position. It'll be just for the, you know, amount of time that we think that we'll need it. And that's, you know, my goal is to, this is, this is meant to be a cost-saving measure. That's the purpose of it. You know, the other, the other piece of this is that I'm concerned that if we pause this, you know, part of, part of the reason that I moved on this so quickly was, part of it was to get the cost savings earlier, so that we could start seeing those cost savings before the end of the year. But additionally, I know there's a lot of changes going on in the HR department with Alyssa, Alyssa Lewis's retirement. And I wanted to make sure that the new leadership in the department is well-supported, okay? That's not something that, you know, I, I know that they, they need support, that's something that I'm handling, and it's just, it, it's a lot. There's just a lot of things that come up with HR. Employment is a big source of litigation, that it just, it just is, okay? You've got, you've got certain sources of conflict in municipal government, and employment frankly is a, is a big piece of that. And I want to make sure that they have the support they need from the get-go, either in labor or in employment. You know, everything from benefits to, you know, working out, hiring, and termination decisions or discipline, to negotiating union contracts, and then dealing with union grievances and union, you know, those relationships that we build with the unions. Those, those relationships can either be bad, and then they're a headache for everyone, or they can be good, and they, and you can work together. And I wanted to make sure that Michelle was part of that process from the beginning, so that the new leadership in HR was supported. I have concerns that if we don't move on that, we will lose this applicant, because she, she's not gonna just wait around for us. So, I, I mean, I understand your concerns. I am happy to answer any questions, but, you know, you've, you all met the candidate, and I think that, you know, the, the budgetary concerns, I think, are very, very real, and this is one of the many ways that the legal department's attempting to cut some of the anticipated costs going into 2026.
I, I wanna add just a few things. Number one, just to be clear, it's not anticipated savings. They will come out of the budget. So there will not be this money and more for outside council out of the budget. We are cutting that out of the budget. It, it is a true replacement, and there will be savings. In fact, I think when we first talked about this, we were going through your budget, and there was a line item in the HR budget for $230,000, and I'd asked if we could find somebody that could do it for less money. And then the second part of it is, as far as potentially waiting, I think we have two union contracts that have been under negotiation for the majority of this year, and the firemen just submitted their demand letter to begin negotiations. That contract expires at the end of the year, and we would be delaying those negotiations, which will also hamper the, you know, we, we may not get through them. I'm not saying that by bringing Michelle on, I'm just saying it'll help move it along a little bit faster. And then the third thing is, just so everybody's clear, we have been getting positions that have been out to hire. We're now requiring every department to come through the third floor and approve it, and we're looking at two things. One is mission critical, and two is, is it gonna be offset somewhere else with savings somewhere else? So this, this falls actually into both categories. I believe that we're gonna both be able to save elsewhere, as well as, it's, it's pretty critical, especially at this point in time. But Alderman Franco, I know you had some-
Yeah, I, I understand both points. I understand you don't wanna bring people on because of the budget, but I always like to bring it down to the math. If the math makes us save money, then let that math speak for itself. I really believe that. Now, what I would say, though, about this is, there are projections out here. So, if a year from now, that we don't see that we're getting bang for the buck for this, I hope we would revisit this and say, oh, maybe we have to contract a little about, maybe we don't need that person. But I think if, if the math tells us that we're gonna save money this year and in the near future, I think it's hard for us to go away from that. But even though there's, you know, hiring, but I, I, but I would say with Alderman Smith, going forward, if the math doesn't say we're saving, then the hiring should not happen. But I think in this one, the point was made that we're gonna save some money, so I think that's a good thing. So I would be voting yes, based just on the math, but with, with the point of looking at it in the future and make sure that it's actually occurring the way we want it to.
Any other alderpeople wish to weigh in? That's Alderwoman Smith?
One last comment from me. Again, I want, I wanna make it very clear, this has nothing to do with the candidate, it's everything to do with the public, what the people are hearing and seeing from us. And I can in good conscience say yes to a $140,000 a year job that is gonna come along with benefits as well. And, and in listening to counsel, I'm also hearing that the plan is to hire a new person for the head of HR. So, at what point is a hiring freeze, a hiring freeze? And, and how do we keep hiring when we're saying we have no money? So, you know, the, the math is the math, I get it, but where, where is, where's, where's the calculator, you know? Because, you know, we're being told that we're going to have to cut everywhere else, but yet we're bringing people in. I don't disagree that we need these people. I don't disagree that we need this person. But I do disagree that this is the wrong time for that. So, that's really all, all I'm gonna say about it. Again, I, I will be voting against this, but it has nothing to do with the legal department not needing this. It has nothing to do with the city of, you know, of Aurora possibly saving money. You know, is the math the math? I don't know, because, you know, a couple weeks ago, when we asked for the math, we didn't get the math. So I can't, I'm not, you know, I couldn't get the math a couple weeks ago, so, you know, I, I can't trust the math today. So that's where I am with this.
Did you get the email I sent you the math on for the, after the last meeting?
I did, but I didn't get the math on other things that I'd asked for when we went through the budget process. So, you know, math works across the board, so I, I'm feeling a little uncomfortable right now with where we are with this. It's just so hard to, to say we're in, you know, a state of Armageddon and, and to be hiring people. You know, if I couldn't be paying, I couldn't pay my, my mortgage, I wouldn't be going on vacation. You know, there's some, you know, there's, there's just some things that need to be weighed out here. This is my personal opinion. Actually, it's not my personal opinion, this is the opinion of many of my constituents, and my constituents don't, don't say a lot, but when they do, I stop and I listen. And they have definitely voiced their opinion here on the budget process, on the acta process, and on the hiring process. So, and I think the little bit of a mixed message is we're on a hiring freeze, and I understand you've got it coming through your office.
Slushy.
Yeah.
Yeah, may I confirm on that?
Well, that's a mixed message, that's a mixed message, mixed message, I can say that three times, that the residents are getting. So, I will not say another word. I've, I've spoke my, my piece here.
So, Chief of Staff Shannon Cameron, I just wanna clarify that, because I think that's really important. Thanks for bringing that up, Alderwoman Smith. We've never called it a hiring freeze, although we could move to that eventually. We know we are a city that requires a lot of really important city services, and if there's certain people that choose to retire, to resign, to move on to another career, we may very well need knowledge and expertise in those roles to, in order to provide quality city services. And as much as someone may choose to move on and retire, we may need to refill that role, because it is, we have deemed it as essential. So we're trying to make sure that we just don't have a freeze at this point, as we're still going through the budget and trying to make the best decisions possible, and that essential services could still be pushed through. As our corporation counsel stated, this was an act to find us a way to save money. And just like other things, we've seen, oh, there's a pot of money here, a pot of money here, a pot of money, all these different departments work, have a little bit of money here. If we put that together, we can have someone, instead of hiring contract after contract after contract, which adds up over time, we can save money by bringing someone in-house. That was why we, you know, had made the decision to go ahead with this position, understand that idea, but I think, we believe right now, a strict hiring freeze could be very detrimental to the city. And although we may have to move to that, right now, that is not where we're at, as we're continuing to ask our departments to make some hard decisions, we're making hard decisions, to present to you a balanced budget come the end of this year. But right now, these are decisions that we're going through to find a way to be creative, but also get the needs met of our city, and get our city services best, you know, realized for our residents and businesses.
Any other aldermen? I, I wanna give Alderman Barrero a chance, and then I'll come back to Alderman Franco. Go ahead.
Yes, this is a very complicated issue, and I think, you know, there's clarity on both sides. But the issue, the issue I have is the, is the process and the timing. And so, the process is that we have a budget that's gonna be presented to us in four weeks, and in that document, we're gonna be probably seeing this position, and those adjustments that the mayor alluded to about reductions in outside council. It would be nice to be able to wait until that document is presented to us, so we can see both of those, and see how the budget's gonna be balanced, what positions are in the budget, which positions are not in the budget, because we have to have that document in about four weeks. So, can we hold this off in four weeks till we see what the plan is and how this is gonna fit into the overall plan that we're gonna be asked to vote on? This is, this is not a lot to ask. If we can just wait until you guys put in all the pieces together, we're not looking, we, we can't see the pieces, we haven't seen the pieces. But we, I think we deserve to be able to see the overall picture of what the 2026 budget's gonna be, and how are we gonna, how are we gonna balance the budget, what's gonna be asked of us. So, you know, as, as, as I stand right now, I mean, I, I would, I would be voting no if we are voting today, but in the future, after we see the budget document, I would feel more comfortable voting on this.
I will just say that I believe numbers have been provided. If not, I'm happy to send those out regarding what human resources and labor costs have been for outside council versus bringing her in. I can provide those again. The fact is, is we still have a month in which we have to have a functioning city, and everybody's gonna have to continue doing their job on a day-to-day basis. And by delaying these choices, we will, we're gonna slow down, and we're gonna spend more. So, I think our concern is, is trying to get this in, stop the bleed now, rather than waiting another month when we've already identified it as an issue.
Yep. You're gonna have to find a new outside council to handle the labor contracts and negotiations, and delay that whole process by whatever amount of time is necessary. One other thing I could add real quick is that, to what Shannon was talking about, we also looked at a veterinarian, because between the animal shelter, the canine money that we spend on vet bills, as, as well as the zoo, it doesn't all add up enough to justify. So we use outside contractors to provide those services. But even when you add those three up, and then take into account that the zoo requires somewhat of a specialized veterinarian, we're not able to come across with it. This one, we're, we're easily able to cross the dollar threshold by cutting back on outside council. So, any other aldermen? I know Alderman Franco wanted to-
So, I'm gonna play devil's advocate on what Alderman Barrero said. If we were financially sound, wouldn't we wanna save money no matter what? Would it really matter that we're in a deficit if we found a cost savings to do this in a better, more efficient way? Now, we could look at the numbers again, but if, if you're doing well, you wanna save money, and if you're doing not, you're not doing well, you definitely need to save money. So I don't think that that's really an item with the budget. I think if you're saving money, we should always do that. So that's number one. And then I ask, I guess, then I have a question for Chief of Staff. If we were to do a hiring freeze, who makes that decision? Does the city council make the decision, or does the mayor's office make that decision, if we're gonna actually do it, like, not purportedly, but actually say, this is what we're gonna do?
We haven't broached that yet. You know, as far as I would turn to corporation counsel, I, sorry, I don't think there's anything in our city code that requires city council to sign off on that, but I'm willing to be, you know, I don't have it all memorized either, so certainly could be. I think it can be a decision internally. I think in general, I hope you've seen with the trend of our office, is that we want to be as transparent as possible and involve you in this. It's a pretty significant decision, and I think that's something we would bring to council and involve communication in, but we're just not there yet.
Okay. Thank you. Alderman Messiascos?
I wasn't gonna say anything, but since you mentioned my name, I'm a little confused here. I really am. I understand that there's two sides to every coin, but then I don't understand the other side of the coin. If we're gonna stop and wait to hire someone, why do we approve anything through any committee, especially the finance committee? Why are we still approving resolutions to spend money- Why are we still approving resolutions to spend money for things that we need to spend on? Why would the mayor hire a chief of staff? I mean, right now, we know we have savings already in the third floor on salaries, for example, but we still, the mayor still needs them, he still needs to function. We need a human resource director. You can't, you can't function a department without a department head. You can't function without having someone who's specialized. That's it. It's not just any attorney. We have someone here that was presented to us, we agreed about it, we have consensus to move forward. Now we're playing with her life as well, and her career, after we've told her, hey, we're looking to move forward. And now she's probably talked to her employer and told her, looking to move on? I don't think that looks good on us either. And what kind of message are we sending out there to, to any future candidate that we may be looking for with the next budget, to hire someone that we might approve on another potentially, and hopefully, a balanced budget? That's what I'm thinking right now. I'm going to be voting yes to move forward. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Alderwoman Bate.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A lot of constituents of mine, they approached and they asked if this is a new position, was it posted online for people to apply? And how was the selection made? So I don't believe we posted it online, is that correct?
No, it wasn't posted online.
So is there a reason we didn't post it online for other people to apply?
I did not post it online. I, I reached out to a number of people that I thought may be interested. Most of them were without, with, were beyond our salary range. I was looking for, I had a very specific thing in mind, for a variety of reasons. I wanted someone that was experienced not just in employment and labor law, which is its own niche in law, but also someone who had a lot of experience in local government, not just government, but local government, municipal, county, township, you know, just local government, because that is niche too. So those two pieces there are both niche environments. And a lot of people who, who do those niche environments, they charge a lot of money for their services. And they, they, you know, so, so it was very, you know, it was pretty narrow. I was also looking for a certain personality. I wanted someone who would work well with the team of people that I have met at HR, that I've met at the police department, that I've met at the fire department, that I have in my office. And so part of it was, was based on my knowledge, because I, I know a lot of attorneys in this area. So no, I didn't do a big search, because I, I had people in mind, and I reached out to them, and felt that I had found a good fit with Ms. Nerman, and went ahead and talked to her about it, and she was interested, and we proceeded.
Again, the residents would have appreciated if all those things that you were looking for, if it was posted online, and if they had a chance to apply for it, so.
I'll bear it in mind in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Any other members of the council?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Bugg.
I definitely see both sides to this. We need to look at every cost-saving measure we can at this time. I think part of the process, and I apologize, my granicus has been going crazy the whole week, so. But in our Legisstar, and you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, that you forwarded some numbers to, yes, Alderwoman Smith. So normally, our fair chief, our fair chief is in Italy, where is he? Rich.
Oh, yes.
Italy. So the chief of staff for the Alderman's office is in Italy right now, having a great time. Normally, these documents go to him, and then they go to all 12 of us, and they're attached to our Legisstar. So the 12 of us sitting up here right now would be looking at the numbers that our Corporation Council is talking about. That didn't happen in this case, we can learn from that, so we can all look at that. I think in a week's time, if we had a bullet-by-bullet, law firm, this law firm had this much outside council costs, this law firm had this much, it totals this much, and the new person's salary is going to be 100, what'd it say, 148,000? And you just compare the two numbers. We don't have that in our Legisstar right now, so I believe Corporation Council, that our outside council figures were high, I know they were high, and they were anticipated to go up, not down. But it's always good for us, the 12 people sitting up here, and the people out there, the residents, to have as much information as possible. So normally, in this case, I, I might say, let's hold this two weeks. I think, however, that would be detrimental, because we do need to move forward, we have three unions who are ready to sit down to the table. I think we can learn from the situation, kind of get more information quicker, and our chief of staff's still going to take a vacation every year, so we just need to get the information through our very competent person stepping in, Crystal, who I'm probably sitting over there, and that we have all the information, and we can make that type of better informed decisions. So I'll be voting yes, but in the future, we just need to have a little bit more information to make the process a little better.
I'm taking notes, PowerPoints next time, got it.
Oh yeah, PowerPoints worked well, you can take notes from Mr. Curly sitting in the back row.
And to be clear, just so if, so it was an email that went to Alderwoman Smith, and it was $295,000 spent up till last week, correct? And then now you're just saying you've got another $33,000 bill? Is that accurate? Okay, so that's the number. And I think we've determined this is 140-plus benefits.
But during the last meeting, this was part of the turning point for me, during the last meeting, when, when we discussed this, you, you had stated, and this is when I started getting a little more nervous about this, that you've got plenty of work to bring her in, more. So then I'm looking at the 248 or 200, or excuse me, 148 or 140, whichever it is, of, you know, I'm thinking, okay, now, before she even starts, we're already saying we've got more work for her. Again, I'm going to, I'm just going to back up. This is not against her, it's not against the need, it's against worrying about the budget. I'm certainly not trying to destroy the woman's life, which was a ridiculous statement to make, that someone would do that. You know, this is, this is part of an entire city decision. So I have to make the decision, which I believe is best for the people that I represent, and this is a really hard ask on all of us, when all we, we have been eating, living, and breathing this budget process, to now add to the budget? And you were going to argue, but we're not really adding because we're taken away, but until, you know, that really happens, it didn't happen. That doesn't happen until next year.
Can I, can I clarify, because I just, I just want to clarify something. So Ms. Nerman has not agreed to come on full-time, she's only agreed to the, the four days a week, which is 80%. When I said that there's more than enough work, what I meant was, is that if, so, so because of the nature of labor negotiations, the work will ebb and flow, right? So when there's a negotiation, it's going to be very busy. When there's not a negotiation, hopefully, we will not be busy with employment discrimination claims or other employment matters. I'm really hoping that that will be the case. And my, my point was that there's enough work in the legal department, that I think that she won't be idle, in other words. So it wasn't that she'll be full-time, it was that in the ebb and flow of employment law and labor law, I think that there'll be more than enough work for her at the, I'm sorry, I can't, I can't, the 32 hours a week, or whatever that four days is, just to, to clarify that piece of it. No problem.
Alderwoman Garza first.
Yes, my question is, how many lawyers we have already in the legal department?
How many, me?
How many we have? Five?
When you say the labor department, or you mean law department?
No, no, legal department.
Legal department.
We currently have five.
Five is what I'm saying. Yeah, because my other concern is, other departments need also, they have some positions available. So if you want to continue doing this, because it's a need, like you say, it's a really need, other departments complaining too, they, they need people. So that we want to continue to say yes, because we have to continue hiring people when the departments have enough people and are still saying we need more people. So, Mayor, raise my question. Like HR, I understand, we don't have it, but they want to announce that position and wait until we saw the numbers with that, or no? Or we want to continue to say yes, because they need it in the department, even when they have enough people to do that, to do the job?
We're saying, we're saying yes because there's an offset, and because the previous corporate council was here part-time, and hired a lot of outside council to get the work done of the city. So one of the goals is to reduce the amount of outside council that we're doing, and this was an easy no-brainer, the math made sense. There will be other places, like I tried giving you the example, we looked at, could we save money by getting a veterinarian? The answer was no, the math did not work. Other positions, we need a director of community engagement, we have not hired that, I don't see it as mission-critical. The math doesn't work, we're working with a skeleton crew there, and those people are doing a really good job where they're at. So this, and I think the thing that makes this both mission-critical and the savings is obvious, but the mission-critical part is the labor negotiations, and we are trying to eliminate or reduce the number of employment-related lawsuits that we have. So on the front end, she's going to be working with HR to make sure that we go through legal before making any decisions. And when that person was outside council, that becomes more difficult to do, and more expensive. If they're here, it's going to be easier.
We have to wait until we have the numbers in front of us, and see where we are, because everybody says the city is in crisis, it's in crisis, but on the other side, we're hiring people. And our residents is questions, I have a lot of emails and telephone calls, they say, well, if the city isn't the budget with crisis, so why are they still hiding people? People don't understand that. And I, and like Jordana said, it's a need, I understand that, but I prefer to wait until we saw the numbers, and see where we are, really, to continue hiding people. Because I, I know, it's, the most we need is more inspectors and property standards. That's what the most complaints I receive in all neighborhood groups' meetings, and we don't have it. And we're not hiding people in there. That's one of my points. Other departments need people.
That's one of the contracts that we have to negotiate, and I look forward to doing it, so we can address some of the shortfalls in property standards. But waiting, I, I feel if we wait, we're probably going to lose this person who's agreed to work four days and be budget-accommodating, and I feel like we're probably, I mean, I don't know that for sure.
Well, if she's, want to be a part-time, and take it away for weeks.
Then what do I do, then what do I do for the budget? Just put 300 grand in?
For weeks, the budget, no, for weeks, for more weeks?
I don't know that she'll wait. I don't know that she will.
Any other?
I have a question.
Okay, I'll give one more here for Alderman Franco.
So do we always use outside council or legal to negotiate contracts? Or do we, or have we, or could we do it with just the HR department and knowledgeable, you know, people in the HR department? How does, how does that work?
Okay, so, so it depends on the contract. It's a, it's a little bit complicated. So if the union brings an attorney, which MAP always does, certain unions always bring an attorney, then we send an attorney, always. It's just, that, that's the standard. If, if the, if they don't, we usually have an attorney advising through phone, or through, you know, like, someone's advising. Because there's typically questions that come up through the negotiations, and negotiate, they don't happen in one day, it's not, it's a process, right? I, I have to tell you, like, me personally, I've sat through them, and I don't have the patience for it, I just, I just don't. And it's just very, it's, it's a little bit tedious, it's a lot of relationship building, it's a lot of conversations, and a lot of times, it, it requires a person who is very familiar with how labor negotiations work. I know that Ms. Lewis used to sit, used to do a lot of them, but my understanding is, I, I don't know who in the HR department right now has the certifications and so forth to do the labor negotiations right now, but Ms. Lewis would have, would also be in contact with our outside labor council throughout the negotiation as needed, because that's just how it's done.
Sure.
And that's because you're, you're negotiating a contract, and a contract that is frankly worth a lot of money. And so you don't want to do that, you know, without a attorney there.
Okay, thank you.
Or attorney advice.
And just to better hone in on that, in negotiations, we're also going to include finance, they have not been included in the past, but any back and forth needs to be evaluated from a budget perspective, HR, and the attorney, those are the three people we'll bring to the table. Alderman Seville.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the comments that were made tonight from both sides, I can understand both positions. I think each of, each of these positions that are being presented this evening are very valid. It seems to me that when we've, in the past, hired outside council, the justification was, it was going to save us money. And in this instance, it appears it did not, which concerns me. And I'm all in favor of saving money, and not, well, not over-spending, I should say. And I understand too, the need to maybe hold this off and, and wait, and looking at the budget that's going to be coming forward for 2026. And I guess my, my first question is, would it hurt to hold this off for 30 days, until the, the new budget is, is presented to us? So we can actually see the global picture, and make a better determination, be a better determination. And number two is, I still, I'm inclined to vote in favor tonight, because I want to save money. I get that. Anytime we can save money, I'm going to be voting yes and raising my hand. Would it really hurt, again, notwithstanding that argument that I'm in favor of, to hold it off for another 30 days? Can we literally afford, quote-unquote, no pun intended, to be able to do that with the parameters that have been discussed by the Corporation Council and the mayor, and the Alderman that have spoken this evening?
Just to clarify exact dates, so everybody has that information, Shannon Cameron, Chief of Staff, all right? We have to have the proposed budget to you on October 15th.
15th.
So that's the exact date, I just wanted to make sure you have that information.
So longer than 30 days. So I guess my question is, now that we know that, would it hurt holding it off a little bit longer?
Make a motion.
Well, I'm, I'm asking the administration, since they're presenting the argument before us.
I think we run a risk, a risk of losing somebody who's a pretty good candidate, and I think it delays negotiations, which makes the whole budget process harder, but they probably, who's to say if they're going to be solved by the end of the year or not?
We have arbitrations and stuff scheduled for October. I, my plan was to have her start as soon as possible, but by mid-October at the latest, so, you know, we'll, we can continue using outside council, those bills aren't going to get any cheaper. But that's, that would be, the, the plan would be to, to use outside council.
The remedy for the council is, if you don't see the, the savings, make a motion during the budget process to reduce it by whatever the, the amount used for outside council. That's how I look at it. I mean, that's, that's a potential remedy for those who are concerned that this somehow isn't going to save us any money during the budget process, that's a, an avenue to take.
Well, again, well, again, I'm not interested in hurting the city and costing more money, but I wanted to lay that out and ask, you know, the questions, and be point-blank about it, and listen to your side, as well as the side of the other Alderman that, that's rightfully representing their constituency, and the city people that we represent. The information that was presented to us at the end of August was eye-opening, and we want to do our part and form a team to, to make sure that we're delivering the type of services for the monies that our constituents are, are paying for our city. that our constituents are, are paying for our city, not only in 2026 but beyond.
Alderman Nunez, I don't believe you had a chance.
Thank you.
Point of order. Alderman Smith called a question, at that point, only the people who had their.
I didn't call the question.
You did or did not, I didn't, I didn't hear it.
You asked for the question.
I said to him to call the question, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't have my mic on, so I didn't call the question.
Okay. I'll call the question now, so if you haven't.
Just for visibility, can we? Oh, sorry.
I'm calling the question now, so.
You're on.
Only, yep, that's it.
He's called the question, so. Yeah. Regarding the numbers that were mentioned in this communication to Alderman Smith, can you share those numbers with us so we can hear them at least? Sure, I gave it to you verbally, I guess, I can send you an email if you want. But it was 295,000 as of the last meeting. Thirty-three. Plus, plus an additional bill for 33,000. And then 148, and then what benefits give or take, just to get it off? Somebody here from HR calculate roughly, or Chief of Staff, or Brian, I don't know if you know, benefits on a person earning 140,000. It's going to be, it's going to be in the twenties, I would. Yeah, that's what I was. And this will completely, you said this completely eliminates that line item for next year.
Yeah.
So that 328 that we're seeing this year. Yes, the, the line item currently was 230, 231 in HR's budget. Okay. What's that? She's saying it was two line items and it's more than that. I know we're over budget this year. And historically, when it comes to union contract negotiations, is there one year where they're heavier than other years? Is this year just an off year compared to what we've seen historically? And what's the low been in years past? Just curious.
So, yes, there's an ebb and flow with the years, I don't know what the low has been. Because the last several years, when I looked, they have spent, so it's two line items. It's, it's line, it's 14, 19, 32-52 and 32-99. It's a total of 294,100 is what's budgeted, we're already over that, so.
What we could do is look at the 24 and 23 audit to get a more, better number of what an off year looks like. I don't know if anybody from staff brought a budget book, but if you did.
Please do.
Just give it a minute while Shannon does some math over there. Stacy's doing the math.
That's good.
Stacy, do you have the ability to pull up the 23 and 24 previous HR expenses? I know it's lumped together from all over the place, but just in HR's budget, what they previously did.
Shannon Cameron, Chief of Staff, thank you Stacy for quick math. What, it would be salary with benefits, $164,000 roughly.
And did we get a answer on the 23 and 24?
She was doing the math.
She's doing it.
She's looking at that for you as well.
Thank you. Any other questions while we wait?
I, I do.
Alderman Larson, liven it up.
No, the question's been called. At that time, only people who had their lights on could ask a question. I believe the only one left is Alderman Bay.
If you have another question, fire away so we can do the math.
I do have two things for clarifications. So currently, we don't have any legal counsel in-house who can handle union negotiations. Like out of those five?
I'm the only one that has, I'm the only one that has experience with it.
But you don't feel comfortable doing that?
It would, part of it's a time issue with it. I, it would, it would take me out of the office for big chunks of time. And frankly, given the workload that I have right now, I, I don't see how I could do it. I'm also, I'm, I hate to admit this, but I'm not particularly good at it. Like I understand how to do it, I can do it, but I'm not, I'm not great at it. And I would like the city to have someone who's good at it.
And you've seen her skills that she's good at?
Yeah.
And, okay, the other was, if we get her, are we reducing the use of outside counsel or eliminating completely?
That's, yes, so, so there is, I, I don't, I don't want to be, no, no, Alderman, so I'm trying, I'm trying to be honest with you. I don't, I don't want to be dishonest with, with this counselor or with the public or anything. So, we still retain outside counsel for litigation, okay? So, the numbers that I'm giving you is not, these don't have to do with litigation. Because that all comes from the RIS fund, that's all, that's all done differently. But if you look at all of the bills from this firm, there's a lot of litigation, there's litigation in there. So it's not, you know, I want to make sure I'm clear that, that Clark, Bard, Smith, when you pull their firms, they're handling some of the city's litigation as well that has to do with employment matters. And that litigation is not something I'm looking at bringing in-house, okay? We're, I'm not planning on doing litigation in-house. And that would still have to go to outside counsel. But that's not the budget line items that we're looking at, that's not what I'm looking at bringing in-house. That would be, that would still be outside counsel, they'll still be doing the, the litigation part of employment law. Does that clarify?
Yeah.
Okay.
So for example, if we need an environmental attorney, we don't have one on staff, it would still be outside counsel. It's just that there's so much HR-related work that we're doing in outside counsel, it makes sense.
I should say, there's so much HR work that's not litigation, that's, that's what we're looking at. So, so that includes the labor negotiations, that includes questions about all sorts of benefits, how federal law and state laws interact for employee, employment, you know, in the, the employment arena. It also includes any sort of discrimination claims, IDHR claims, you know, all that, all, all that stuff that isn't litigation but involves the complicated world of employment law. So as long as it's not filed in court, then it would, it would be handled in-house. Okay? Thank you.
Stacy Peterson, Chief Financial Officer, City Treasurer. I pulled up HR's line items. They have a professional fee line item where the attorneys come out of their total cost in that account for 2023 was 228,000 dollars. Again, there's attorneys in there, there's also some notary information, but the majority of that does equate to attorneys. The 2024 line item, they spent roughly about 200,000. They also have an arbitration line item. And the total costs in 2023 for arbitration services that were in this account was 33,000, that's rounded. And for 2024, it's 55,000.
Roughly 255,000 in 2024. Can you mention that's attorneys, notary?
Yes, they, the, HR will still need some sort of line item in there. But that's the total expenditures that was in those accounts in 2023 and 2024.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to ask the clerk to please call the roll.
I have a motion and a second to discuss the item, but as far as.
Motion approved. Motion made by Alderman Messiakos.
Second.
Second by Alderman White. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Barrero.
No.
Alderwoman Garza.
No.
Alderman Messiakos.
Yes.
Alderman Nunez.
No.
Alderman Franco.
Yes.
Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Alderman Benuelos.
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith.
No.
Alderman Bug.
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade.
No.
Alderman Larson.
Yes.
Alderman White.
Yes.
Seven yes, five no.
Motion carries, this resolution is adopted. The next item under unfinished business, would the clerk please read the agenda item?
250639, a resolution authorizing the director of purchasing to execute the service agreement with the Boys and Girls Club of North Centra, Illinois to administer the City of Aurora's after-school and summer programs in an amount not to exceed 583,000 dollars for 2025-2026 school year and summer for a one-year term with two one-year options for the Youth Services Division.
So moved.
This has been my, motion made by Alderman Franco, second by Alderman Seville. Are there any questions under this agenda item? I know that there's one abstention. Any questions, Alderwoman Bade?
We would appreciate if 204 and 308 are also included in this, next time, it was mentioned before. And I did get emails from residents in my area, so I don't see those schools included, those school districts. So I don't know what's the plan if we can add some of those schools.
I'll have Simon address that, I think that came up previous discussion, but.
Yeah.
Good evening, Simon Rodriguez, Youth Services Manager. Yes, Alderwoman, I, I know that was also mentioned by Alderwoman Smith. We are currently working in both discussions with both those school districts. But also, we want to ensure that we are being very mindful of the existing after-school programs for both school districts. But we do, we are continuing conversations with both, and we are still including those two school districts in our summer programs as well.
Alderwoman Smith.
So if something were to change and they were to want to become part of this program, would that change the overall cost of the program?
Not for year one, and then year two, it's, it's a little bit, if you see the amounts are less. So I, I think what we would do is essentially look at changing some of the, the budget so that we can potentially add newer sites or offset some of the cost for newer sites.
But is there an option, excuse me, follow-up? Is there an option for these two schools to participate this year or is that option off the table now? From both ends, maybe?
Correct, and, and just to re, I should have started from the beginning. Having discussions, it's, it's a long process to get into a school district to see what it current gaps. What we're trying to do is fill gaps. So if a gap exists at the City of Aurora, through our partnership with the Boys and Girls Club, we can fill it, then we will go ahead and, and move forward with it. As it stands right now, currently, some, a school districts, excuse me, the schools, Aurora schools and those school districts do have after-school programming. So now we're trying to see if there are gaps within those schools. If that, if we do see that, then yes, we will, we will add that. But as of right now, at least for this school year, that process does take a while, there's a lot of certificate, you know, conversations and they have, the Boys and Girls Club needs to be approved as a vendor, so there's just a lot of steps to get that going. But we're right now having those conversations.
So basically, it's not going to happen this?
For this school year, possibly not, maybe next semester. So we're definitely having those conversations. And we'll, we'll definitely follow up, even if it's a case where they're just not interested. And that has been part of the conversation, is they're, they just might not have interest, and we'll provide that information to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for this agenda item or for Simon? Alderman Barrero.
Yes. Simon, can you, can you explain to, how this, we are not, this is not a grant for the Boys and Girls Club? This, we are, we are hiring them.
That is correct.
To do these programs for us, can you please explain the alternative? If we were to do it in-house and how we're versus this, this model?
Absolutely, and I'm sure Alderman, you're, you're very familiar with the process back in 2010 when we first put this out for a request for proposals. Prior to that, and that should be included in the presentation that was added in Granicus. But prior to that, the cost to run those in-house, you have to have more staff. So we decided back in 2010 to have a nonprofit, in that case, I'll C I S, Cities and Schools, or Communities and Schools, to run those programs. So from a cost perspective, it's much lower than to have those in-house. But it is not a grant, that is correct, these are coming from our general funds. However, the after-school funds do come from our gaming tax. And I know that's included also in the, in the memo and the information.
Any other questions on this agenda item? No further questions, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Barrero.
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza.
Yes.
Alderman Messiakos.
Yes.
Alderman Nunez.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
Yes.
Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Alderman Benuelos.
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Bug.
Abstain.
Alderwoman Bade.
Yes.
Alderman Larson.
Yes.
Alderman White.
Yes.
Eleven yes, one abstain.
Motion carries, this resolution is approved. Is there a motion to suspend the rules to consider items under new business? Motion was made by Alderwoman Smith, second by Alderwoman Garza. Will the clerk, clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Barrero.
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza.
Yes.
Alderman Messiakos.
Yes.
Alderman Nunez.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
Yes.
Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Alderman Benuelos.
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Bug.
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade.
Yes.
Alderman Larson.
Yes.
Alderman White.
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no.
Will the clerk please read the item under new business?
250713, a resolution authorizing the execution of documents to renew the line of credit in the amount of $10 million with Old Second National Bank for a one-year term expiring on June 30th, 2026.
Is there a motion to approve this item?
So moved.
Taken.
Motion made by Alderman Franco, second by Alderwoman Garza. Are there any questions or discussions regarding this agenda item? There being no further questions, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Barrero.
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza.
Yes.
Alderman Messiakos.
Yes.
Alderman Nunez.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
Yes.
Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Alderman Benuelos.
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Bug.
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade.
Yes.
Alderman Larson.
Yes.
Alderman White.
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no.
Motion carries, this item is approved. Next item on the agenda, agenda item 250712, the large and small bill list. Motion was made by Alderwoman Smith, second by Alderman Franco. Are there any questions or discussions on the bills? Alderman Seville.
I have one question, number three. A payment was made to the Aurora Civic Center Authority for the last of the Phase One promenade, Riverwalk Promenade. Could somebody just tell us what the last phase was?
Stacy, do you have a minute?
On the last page, line item four, I'm sorry, line item three.
Do you have the, the actual line number?
Line item three.
Sorry, number three.
The last page.
Oh, last page, number three, okay. Okay. It is. So Phase One, if you don't remember, was the $10 million for the parking garage and a $3 million reimbursement for the promenade. This is pay, it appears to be payment number three, but we'll let Stacy verify that. Of the Paramount? Yes. It's what it says at his side. And it comes, it comes out of that GO bond. We'll let, we'll let her verify it.
Stacy Peterson, Chief Financial Officer, City Treasurer. The payment to the Aurora Civic Center Authority of the $200,044.07 was part of the agreement that we had with them to help reimbursements for the Riverwalk Promenade, which is that sidewalk that's along the Fox River. This, let's see. Trying to pull up the resolution.
Any other questions on the bills while we wait for?
I'm just trying to pull up the resolution, so.
Sure.
Stacy, I think we know our answers, so I don't think you have to pull up the resolution.
Okay. Yeah, it's just the final payment for the promenade.
That's fine. I just want to verify that, so. Appreciate it.
And as part of that resolution, we also have paid the $10 million for the parking garage. That was something I looked into early, so.
Did you?
But construction wrapped up on that not long ago, and it probably just worked its way through ACHA and now...
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions before we pay the bills? There's been a motion and a second. No further questions. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Barrero?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Messiakos?
Yes.
Alderman Nunez?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Benuelos? Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bog?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bae?
Yes.
Alderman Larson?
Yes.
Alderman White?
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no.
There's no need for an executive session. We still drug it out. There's been a motion to adjourn by Alderman Franco, second by Alderwoman Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Any opposed? Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned at 7:35 PM.